Hello, everyone. I want to welcome you to the May 1st, 2023 Menlo Park Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone who's in the chambers as well as tuning in on Zoom. The first item is to call the roll, and we are excited to have two new commissioners this evening joining us. So I will call in alphabetical order. I will try to. Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Erlich.
Present.
Commissioner Farrick.
Present.
Commissioner Riggs. Oh, he's not here. Okay, absent. Commissioner Schindler.
Present.
And I am here as well. So we have a quorum, and we can proceed. The next item is Item C, Reports and Announcements. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there any reports or announcements?
Yes. Good evening, Acting Chair Harris and Commissioners. So at the last meeting, we received questions about Menlo Uptown's community amenity. So I'd like to provide a quick update on that. So the Ravenswood Health Clinic has notified the applicant and city staff that they have decided not to pursue the Menlo Uptown location. So the applicant is pursuing other options. Staff will work with the applicant to determine the appropriate level of review once the applicant decides on an option. And I'd also like to welcome Commissioner Farrick and Commissioner Eric to the commission tonight. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so do we know why the Ravenswood Clinic has pulled out? Is there another possibility for a clinic either elsewhere or another operator for Menlo Uptown? I know that we were all pretty excited about that clinic, so I think it would be really disappointing if we are not able to provide that clinic. And I know that we would be less excited about having a community amenity fee paid instead. So what thoughts do you have?
Yeah, I don't have any additional information at this time, but I'll certainly keep the commission updated as we receive new information.
Okay, thank you. So next, Agenda Item D, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the commission on any subject that is not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, city or district of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items that are not listed on the agenda, and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment other than to provide general information. Please note that if you are here to comment on a specific item, you will have a chance to do so once we get to your agenda item. So can you please let us?
Sorry. Before we start Public Comment, could we activate the monitors on the DIASE, just so that we're ready for the rest of the evening, if that's possible?
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Okay, as you're doing that, I think we could move to Public Comment?
If I may, through the chair. Thank you. I'm not sure, but it appears that the monitors might be turned off. I don't know if there's a button on the bottom right side, kind of a round power button. Maybe they're all shut off? Or if we could just confirm, is it working over there?
It's on the bottom right corner.
There we go.
On the screen. So I think...
The lowest, it appears it's the lowest of the... There we go. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Knowledge.
Thank you all. We can now segue to the Public Comment. Yes, thank you very much, Acting Chair Harris. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, and I see no Public Comment cards for General Public Comment, but I'm happy to wait a moment if anyone would like to speak on General Public Comment items.
Let's give it a moment.
I still see no hands. That's correct.
Okay, let's close Public Comment then, and we'll move on to the Consent Calendar, Agenda Item E. And this is approval of minutes for four meetings, January 12th, February 6th, February 27th, and March 13th of 2023. January 12th and February 6th were continued from our last meeting due to some typos and missing language. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have any comments or clarifications?
I think my only clarification would be that commissioners who were not present at these meetings may vote to approve them if they feel comfortable trusting in the accuracy of the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you. Would anyone on the commission like to pull either of these items? Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I'd like to pull the February 6th meeting minutes. There was just a small addition to the Parkline study session that I sent to Ms. Sandmeyer that I'd like to just add to those minutes.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, could I have a motion then to approve the consent calendar with the February 6th minutes pulled?
I'm sorry, clarification?
Yes.
I don't intend to pull, but I am going to abstaining on two of the four, so you can have these voted on individually, because I won't be able to vote on two of the four. To abstain on two of them, I will vote on... I vote on all four, excuse me, but to abstain on...
Okay. In that case, maybe we should separate them, if it's okay with you guys. All right, so could I have a motion for January 12th?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 12th minutes.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Let's take a vote on January 12th. So Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Thank you. The meeting minutes from January 12th pass.
And through the chair, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Although I was not present at these meetings, I was advised that we are able to vote on them if we feel that we can trust the staff report as well as fellow commissioners with their, you know, support for the items.
Yes, as she said. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to pull February 6th. We will vote on February 27th. Can I have a motion for February 27th? Meeting notes.
I'll make a motion to approve for February 27th.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Doe. Let's take a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Abstaining as I was not present.
Okay, and Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
I'm... Oh, Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to abstain because I was not at that meeting. However, the motion passes, and we can move on to March 13th. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 13th? Commissioner Doe.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 13th minutes.
Terrific. Can I have a second?
Happy to second.
Commissioner Schindler, we have a second. Let's take a vote. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you, I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Okay, and I am also a yes, so that motion passes. Thank you all for going through those one by one. All right, so I'm going to close Item E, and we're going to move on to Agenda Item F, which is a public hearing, and we have three of these this evening. The first one is 1143 Woodland Drive, and the application is for... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry about that. I have 1143 Woodland Drive.
No. Looks like a typo.
Is that a typo? Okay. The application is for a use permit to construct a one-story detached accessory dwelling unit within the front setback of a standard lot in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The ADU would be constructed with a four-foot front setback where 20 feet is required. This item was continued from the meeting on April 24th, 2023. Given that, would there be an update from staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Harris and Commissioners. It is 1143 Woodland Avenue, not Drive. Sorry about that. The other update I want to share was the errata to the staff report of the last commission meeting. Generally, after some discussion with HCD, which is the State Department of Housing and Community Development, it's determined that since this ADU falls under subsection E of Government Code, Section 65852.2, the ADU will be processed ministerially through a building permit. So there would be no commissioner discussion and no action on this item. With that, I can take questions. We have city attorney Neera Doherty on the phone with us, or on Zoom with us, and Miriam Slyman as well.
I would love to hear from the city attorney. You or either one?
Neera's.
Hi, is there a specific question, or do you want me to reiterate what?
Yeah, if you could reiterate and clarify what you've learned since last week.
Yeah, no problem at all. So there is a category of accessory dwelling units under the state ADU laws. These are commonly referred to as subdivision E ADUs. When a proposed ADU falls within subdivision E of the state laws, those ADUs, as expressly drafted or as interpreted in the state laws based on the plain meaning of the statute, no local standards may apply to those ADUs. So subdivision E ADUs include internal conversion ADUs, attached ADUs and detached ADUs, where those ADUs are less than 800 square feet in size, meet four-foot side and rear yard setbacks, and are under new height limits imposed by the state. So the proposed ADU that's before you this evening meets the four-foot setback, the 800 square feet and the height limitations, and a very literal reading of the state laws suggests that as a result of that, the city cannot impose any local standards on those ADUs. There has been some informal discussion with HCD in the past to suggest that it doesn't make a lot of practical sense that those subdivision E ADUs have to meet four-foot side and rear yard setbacks and yet would have presumably zero front yard setback requirements that could be applied to them. HCD has in the past given informal advice that cities can impose front yard setbacks as a result of this sort of like impractical result of the state ADU laws. But I'll tell you, as someone who has advised HCD themselves and has advised numerous agencies on ADU laws, there's a lot of impractical results that can be read into the state ADU laws. So we reached out to HCD to see what their current opinion was on whether or not cities can impose front yard setbacks on subdivision E ADUs, and we received informal written advice that no cities may not impose any front yard setback standards on subdivision E ADUs. The implications of this is that the ADU that's before you this evening, which encroaches into and does not comply with the city's front yard setback requirements, would not be required to comply with that requirement and would therefore be entitled to the ministerial review that other subdivision E ADUs are, as a matter of state law, entitled to.
Thank you, Commissioner Doherty, and thank you to staff and... I'm sorry, Commissioner. City Attorney Doherty, and thanks also to staff and the city attorneys for researching this. So given this direction, I would recommend that we move on to the next item on the agenda. However, I said that there are a lot of people who probably would like to make comment on this item, so I'm going to allow public comment. I'd like to restrict it to two minutes per commenter, but I want to go ahead and give that opportunity. So I would like to open it up for public comment for this item.
Thank you, Acting Chair Harris. At this time, I can start the public comment process, and also as a reminder for anyone in the audience virtually, feel free to raise your hand, or if you're calling by phone, press star nine, and you can also join for the public comment for this item. So I'll start with the first person who's in person here at the council chambers. We have William Ellsworth. You may proceed to the podium, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
I will try to be brief. I was told that we would have three minutes, so I may take a few minutes... I may take a little bit longer than I was given. So let me begin. My name is William Ellsworth. My wife and I have resided at 1215 Woodland Avenue since before the original house, 1143 Woodland Avenue, was constructed in 1983. Here, the long property line on the east side of the property, as proposed, the ADU will occupy 39 feet of our shared property line. We oppose the construction of the ADU as currently planned. The lot is overbuilt, as I will explain, and adding the ADU at that location that requires a variance in front setback will only exacerbate the privacy issues for us and our neighbors. A large and tall two-story house at 1143 Woodland looms over our property. The original section of the house stands well above grade, as due to an error made by the city of Menlo Park at the time of its construction. The house has two kitchens and living areas on the second floor that compromise the privacy of all three of our bedrooms, both our front and backyard. We had screened much of the house with trees along the lot line, most of which had to be removed when the common fence was replaced to prepare the house for sale to its current owners. According to project plans, however, all of the trees that still provide us some screening of the main house will be removed, with no plan to replace them or improve privacy along our shared lot line. This is one of our concerns. Major additions to the house were made twice by the second owner in the late 1980s. When the final phase of construction was completed, the house exceeded the floor-area ratio for the lot. It's a small lot. As a consequence, the owner was required to obtain an after-the-fact variance from the city or tear down part of the house. Since it was already built, and we were told by the city that no further construction could occur, we chose not to oppose the variance. I would note that the square footage of the house listed on Page 1 of Exhibit A, it's in the upper left-hand corner, is incorrect. The square footage of the existing house is substantially larger than the 28, 36 square foot listed in Exhibit A by the proposers. The square footage numbers in Exhibit C from the city generally agree with my memory. However, as listed in Exhibit C, the square footage of the house does not exceed the floor-area ratio for the lot, which is at odds with the need for the second owner to obtain a variance. I would ask the city to verify the footage of the house. As the total floor area ratio of the application, the house plus the ADU, is very close to the limit. If the square footage of the house is larger than listed, this project will be over the limit. In summary, we oppose the granting of the building but permit for an ADU with a front setback of just four feet, when 20 feet is normally required on a lot that is already overbuilt. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter in person is Laura Hanley. You may now proceed to the podium for your public comment. Thank you.
Since I was also given the three-minute limit, I have prepared words that are three minutes. I was granted an additional three minutes from my friend Sandra Horowitz, who is also in the audience. SB 9 has no process of review for substandard lots or zoning oddities such as a landlocked property reached by an access easement. SB 9 has very few restrictions, but one is that the front parcel setback shall be maintained. SB 9 and Title 16 of Menlo Park allows your discretion to grant or deny this variance. The variance should be denied. 1143 impacts nine neighboring properties. Eight of them oppose the construction of the variance being sought by you today. We found no neighbors that support the project. The project description enumerates six reasons why the applicant feels it's appropriate to plop an ADU in their front yard. Every item is solely to promote the 1143's interest to save time, money, and inconvenience. I'm especially galled by Item 4. The ADU will be located in an underdeveloped portion of the site. It is the front yard. It's supposed to be underdeveloped. But what is not communicated is the reason the owners shared with me last summer. Construction of the ADU in another spot on the property would impact them. They would have to look at it. 1143 enjoys all the benefits of this development and foists all the burdens and injury upon its neighbors. The variance should be denied. So why is the variance being recommended by staff? My best guess is that staff is misled by errors and factual misrepresentations in the packet. Just one example: neighbor feedback was not solicited. In a brief conversation initiated on another topic, documents were handed to us, my husband and I. I immediately expressed resistance to such a project, and I was told they will build by right. There was no additional communication. It appears that our feedback was merely used by the owners to massage their message as they went from one neighbor to another, telling one neighbor they were going to use the ADU for an elderly parent, and another that they would use the ADU for office space and no one would ever live in it. But I believe what they told me last summer. They intend to put two additional adults on that property, bringing the total to at least seven adults. The outreach and effort to work with neighbors is a fabrication. The variance should be denied. With this increase in occupancy comes a fleet of delivery vehicles, Amazon, UPS, USPS, Costco, rolling by day and night, clocked at the speeds up to 20 miles an hour, only 16 feet from my dining room table. Because 1143 offers no turnaround, they retrace their steps at a similar speed backwards. I have been nearly hit multiple times trying to leave my garage. A neighbor, only last week, told me how she has instructed her young daughter to get off her bike and look down my driveway before proceeding to avoid being hit, as if it was an intersection. It makes me sad to learn that children cannot walk or bike in front of my house without fear of bodily harm. Traffic is a hazard on my property and out-of-control nuisance for the neighbors. The ADU project will magnify the problem. The variance should be denied. I wish to make one further point. The ADU cannot be built without crossing and impacting my property, ours. We pay taxes to San Mateo County. We pay the insurance. We are forced to invest over $19,000 in new landscaping just recently to hopefully dampen, when mature, hopefully dampen the noise and nuisance already created by the occupants of 1143. Our property is not, as Casita, the developer, calls it, a non-exclusive easement driveway act says. It is our home, our beautiful home. The access granted is not a free license to unilaterally destroy our peace and quality of life. As landowners, 1143 has rights, but our rights and our neighbors' rights should be part of your calculation, too. There is too little latitude of discretionary oversight in SB 9, but the rules around front setbacks are clear. Do not approve this variance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is John Hanley. At this time, please come up and begin your public comment. Thank you.
You described this as a 10-month planning process, but only in the last 10 days has the city disclosed matters of public record to us on this project. I'm John Hanley of 1141 Woodland. The cited subdivision E is silent on sewage, yet it does not offer carte blanche for a cholera-spreading ADU to be constructed. It is silent on the size of front yard setbacks, yet it does not invite sidewalk settlements. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all property owners are endowed by the city with certain unalienable rights, that among these are public health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare; that to secure these rights municipal functions are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the local residents to alter or to abolish it and to institute new governance. Laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to effect their safety and happiness. Everyone in this room should each day seek to preserve and extend the charm and beauty inherent to the residential character of the city, to regulate and limit the density of population, encourage the most appropriate use of land, stabilize the value of property, and provide the economic and social advantages of a planned community. These words are from the city, not from me. Title 16, Chapter 2. What does this commission plan? Do you plan anarchy and chaos? I reject that notion and invite each of you to look within your heart to see if that is what you choose to embrace. I and every property owner in District 2 could similarly propose to construct multiple ADUs in our front yards without regard to setbacks. Is that the community you believe the state and city should strive toward? Is that the future you here today wish to build? Online communities have a very specific name for someone who advances a proposition yet will not advance their name. We call them anonymous coward. Planning staff suggests that some anonymous coward residing in Sacramento, who may or may not have sat through a Torts 101 class, has decreed in binding fashion upon each of you seated at the DIASE that staff might ministerially approve Plan 47 construction and that this commission might be powerless to alter such plans. Is that the outcome you want to accede to during this evening's proceedings? There is a use permit resolution on the table in the agenda packet, awaiting a first and a second. You can choose for this commission's action tonight to lead to a city lawsuit, or you can choose to take action that is appealable to the city council. Why are you here this evening if not to vote? Vote thumbs up or thumbs down, but vote. Do not for a moment entertain staff's proposal to usurp this commission's Title 16 responsibilities.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Kelly Ferguson. Please step forward, and you may present your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two children that are on the Zoom call tonight, and I would request to use the three minutes of my son's time. I have six minutes of prepared remarks.
Okay, so I've asked that we limit ours to two minutes, so that would give you four minutes. I would just ask that you be brief and try not to repeat any of your thoughts.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kelly Ferguson at 168 Oak Court, directly adjoining the proposed new house at 1143 Woodland. Let me start by saying I know your service as Commissioners is not easy, and not everyone realizes you are true public servants volunteering out of sense of community and public duty. On any given night, there are diverse perspectives, zoning rules, and policy to balance. Things can get heated. I know, I've been there, having myself served on the Planning Commission many years ago. This is also not the first time I've been on this side of the podium. In 2006, my late husband and I went through the use permit process for our second-story addition. But there are two major differences tonight. Number one is the preposterous notion that building in a front setback is no longer subject to discretionary review. Why? Based on some informal conversation city staff had with an anonymous Sacramento bureaucrat? Why would the city willingly give this up? This would be a momentous change to Menlo Park zoning. Are we to understand every front yard in Menlo Park can now have an ADU plopped down next to the sidewalk just by getting a building permit? No, there should be hearings, analysis, a process before such a dramatic change is adopted. In fact, the city did just go through an extensive process to modify the zoning code to conform with state law. to conform with state law and did not remove the conditional use permit requirement for building in the front yard setback. Please do not allow yourselves to be muzzled. This is the very time you should be speaking up, and I hope you do. The second difference from when my husband and, um, and I got our addition approved is that in our case, we worked with all the stakeholders and came up with a design that satisfied everyone, including six immediate neighbors. With the 1143 Woodland application, the owners have met with me but haven't made any meaningful changes to their design, which by any measure of common sense is overwhelmingly intrusive. In fact, they haven't brought any stakeholders on board. This cookie cutter modular is way too big, way too close, and the owners need to get back to the drawing board. Because the new house is proposed in the front yard setback and because it is immediately across from much of the entire back of the house, which is all windows, you can see for yourself the obvious impact it would have. My landing, my living room, my dining room, my master bedroom, my back patio living area, the focus of all these areas would become the ugly blank face of the new house. And mind you, the, the true height of the modular structure is at least 13 and a half feet, so the actual impact would be even greater than shown in the photos before you, which is maybe at 11 feet for the story pole height. And it is not just the bulk and visual intrusion, it is the privacy and enjoyment of this lovely, tranquil space and the prospect of another family just a few feet away being able to hear my private conversations and me, their most private moments. This is the kind of proposal that gives ADUs a bad name, that turns people against them as a matter of policy, and I urge you to use your discretion and vote against it. In addition to the visual and privacy impacts, there would be a negative financial impact as set out in Realtor Jackie Copel of Caldwell Bankers' letter and report in your packet. Ms. Copel has 30 years of experience selling property in Menlo Park and the mid peninsula. Like she said in her letter, with my open floor plan, the new house would become the new focus of all these rooms. She estimates the deduction on the value of my property will be eight to 12% or between, or about $350,000. The front yard setback is there for a reason. It is for the protection of privacy, daylight, and air. This is not the situation to grant such an egregious exception to the front setback requirement. More philosophically, we can ask, what is the purpose of the conditional use permit? It is for the very purpose of airing out the evidence and seeing for yourself if the proposal harms other properties. It is for you to make the finding from our Menlo Park zoning ordinance whether or not it is quote detrimental to the comfort and welfare in persons residing in the neighborhood and whether or not it is quote injurious or detrimental to property in the neighborhood. The bulk, visual impact, the privacy impact, the loss of light and natural views, the financial injury to me, my family, and our property are all blatantly and substantially both injurious and detrimental. This is surely not the situation to grant an exception to the front yard setback requirement. Please, use the discretion the zoning ordinance gives you to say the required findings cannot be made. Please, use the discretion you are empowered with to turn down this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Harry I. Price. Please come up and you may speak at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable commissioners. My name is Harry Price. I am attorney for Kelly Ferguson, the most impacted neighbor who would have her house face this new structure. I was here a week ago with a different set of prepared remarks, but in light of what's happened the past week and what you heard tonight, I want to remind you, you're the voice of the local community. And my recommendation is not only to deny this application, but to also send a message to the city council to direct staff to enforce front yard setbacks. It's that simple. I understand the protocol of appearing before you. We all want to praise the hardworking staff. We all want to respect the opinion of the city attorney who you, who you pay and ask to research these things. But here, the problem is, and you heard it directly from the city attorney herself, um, they didn't reach an opinion at a city level on this. They instead tried to defer it to the HDC. That's an unreasonable position for a number of reasons. If there was ever a circumstance for staff to stand up for the local citizenry, this is that topic, front yard setbacks. Instead, they obtained what was called a current informal opinion. That doesn't rise to the level of the legislative history. In fact, whenever there's litigation over statutes, the first thing they look at is legislative history. Here, they had a history of addressing side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, but they purposely avoided front yard setbacks. That doesn't send a message, you should, you should ignore them. If the state didn't, as part of their legislature, they elected to shrink three of the four sides of the property, but not the front yard. Now, this is a property that cannot change its front yard setback. If so, the main house would be non-conforming. You can't just say, well, let's just take one of the side yards and call that the front yard. This is a house that was already shoehorned into a small lot. Now, when I was here a week ago, I planned to talk about the fact that there could be alternatives available to this applicant. Make the ADU adjacent to the main house, for instance. Uh, it doesn't have to be freestanding in the front yard setback. Another thing I was going to talk about was that you should make a conditional upon the main house being in compliance with permits, because the main house is an unpermitted duplex. If you allow this to go forward on a ministerial basis, you'll allow a tripe, triplex on that property, basically. So, I urge you to, even though I heard loud and clear from the chairperson that your inclination was not to take any action tonight, I hope that you reconsider that in light of the public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter in person is, uh, I apologize, I'm a little, little difficulty reading your name, but Sandra Arindah?
Oh, I, I, I ceded my time.
You ceded your time. Okay. Thank you for that update. Uh, our next commenter in that case is Ellen Hafner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Let's see. I'm Ellen Hafner. I own the property at 1117 Woodland and 1115. It is a correct duplex zone property. I, as I said, I live in 1117. I'm sorry, but I disagree with what they want to do. It would be nice to be neighborly and say, oh, fine, you know, just do something, maybe I'll do it. No, that isn't it. I just totally disagree with granting them extra space, maybe is what I would say. And, um, it would also mean many more cars up and down the driveway, which abuts the side of my property. People coming and going, we have no control over the people who would do that, come and go. My living room looks out on the driveway. Two upstairs bedrooms in my home look over that driveway. I just disagree with, um, this request, and I'm sorry as a neighbor, but I think it's crowding the property and it's crowding it not legally. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Catherine Hafner-Zocatelli. You may proceed and speak at this time. And also, we do have some virtual hands raised after this commenter. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for hearing us. I'm Catherine Ellen Hafner-Zocatelli. I live with my mother Ellen. I've been there the last five years. I was also born to my mother and father, who first bought that property back in 59, so long-time residents and long-time property owners. I feel very lucky to live in that neighborhood again. It's a beautiful neighborhood with lots of trees, and we have our space. So I think having an extra unit on the back will definitely bring more traffic, will definitely bring more noise. My mother is generally in the living, dining room, kitchen area of her home, and often she'll say, oh, who just went down the driveway? And it wasn't even in our driveway, it's the adjacent driveway. But the, especially the delivery trucks just fly down there, and it, um, it creates a The idea of adding more adults on that property would probably increase that, along with cars, and parking is also an issue. We're not supposed to park on Woodland Avenue overnight, and so there are some neighbors already who park in Menlo Park on the other side of the creek and then walk over to their homes. So just, those are some other things to keep in, in mind as you decide on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, I see two hands raised, virtually, for comments. I can proceed with that if you'd like. So our first-
Please.
Thank you. Our first commenter is someone named Anna. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself if you'd like. You can provide your name and jurisdiction. You're welcome to do that, and you'll have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, wonderful. Hi, I'm Anna Pedroz. I live at 141 Oak Court, um, and I've been studying this project that I learned about last Monday. Um, in, uh, the first thing I wanted to know is I read the whole report and I didn't see any plans to take care of additional drainage to alleviate flooding concerns. We just got flooded in Woodland and Oak Court last December with the San Francisco Creek, and with climate change, flooding is going to be expected in the future years. It can easily affect properties that are even not in the flood zone, but very close to it. And I'm concerned that the, if the eventual flooding were to occur, the additional square footage of concrete, which exceeds the maximum allowed, allowed the square footage, wouldn't allow for proper drainage, and it will cause additional flooding to 1143 Woodland Avenue, but also to adjacent properties. And I'm concerned that this was not listed in the report. So I would encourage staff to actually work with the owners to facilitate that and, and do that, because we, we will get flooded, like we just did three months ago. Second thing, um, when I have inquired, and other neighbors inquire here in Oak Court to the staff about, um, an additional ADU, the front setback has been always said it has to be 20 feet, so I don't know why this is changing right now. I don't understand why we were told something before and now it's something else. This property is, his, is FAL, is it the maximum allowed by the ordinance? So right now we'll have even more space taken by this unit, so that seems really, um, like not following ordinance. Additionally, um, I was wondering what other things did the staff look into? It seems that they have a huge back, um, um, area, so why did the unit not look, why didn't they look for another placement for this unit that will be less impactful for the neighbors? And why couldn't they look for a smaller size that will be less prominent and less affecting the neighbors? I mean, they have a lot of neighbors that are impacted. They need another unit? Fine, that's cool, but can you work with your neighbors, set it in a different place where you will not impact their privacy and where you will be in compliance with the ordinance, the zoning ordinance? There is a space. I look at the maps. Why can they not look for a solution that will be in compliance with setbacks and front setbacks and still get their, the unit and make everybody happy? How come the staff has not been working more collaboratively with the neighbors and also the, the, the owners to find an alternative solution that doesn't get all these people unhappy? And finally, I'm wondering what happens in the future? Like, are we going to be ignoring the commission's ability to, to try to find solutions when neighbors are not happy, when something is trying to ask for a variance? If there is a variance, the commission should be allowed to talk and intercede for the neighbors that are around. What is, what, what, what does say about the status quo? Are we changing the status quo? Are we all going to have new units in our front yards? Is that why we want from Menlo Park? And that's it. I, I had so many more questions. I just, sorry, it's all questions. I, I, I wish the staff could, could look into them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And lastly, we have one additional hand raised. Uh, this is a person named Erin Eckhaus. I will allow you to unmute yourself at this time, and you'll have two minutes to speak as well. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Erin Eckhaus. I'll try to keep this brief. I believe Menlo Park has received advice from the State Department of Housing and Community Development that there is not a matter of discretion here as to whether or not this proposed ADU is legal. It is legal under state law, and you will be setting yourselves up for potential legal trouble with the state if you improperly deny this. So I understand people's frustration. Uh, I'm glad you have a great neighborhood. I encourage you to welcome some new neighbors into your midst, and I encourage the city not to violate state law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and at this time I see no other hands raised, so if you'd like, we can close public comment.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, I will go ahead and close public comment. I think people have had enough time to raise their hands. So, I appreciate all of the commenters tonight, and I wanted to ensure that everyone could be heard. However, given the direction from the city attorney, as well as the plain language of the state statute, basically means the planning commission is not able to act on this item, and it, the ADU will be ministerially approved. Therefore, I would recommend that we move on to the next item in the agenda. However, if one of the other commissioners is interested in speaking, please raise your hand, let me know. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, thank you. And first, my apologies for coming in after the staff presentation. I did, of course, read the errata to the staff report before this meeting tonight, and apologies again if this has already been answered, this specific question. But I would like to press the city attorney's office for their level of certainty in their interpretation, or rather, their acceptance of an informal interpretation, and whether or not that is in fact the best guideline for the planning commission on this project on this night.
Okay, and I see, um, that we have the city attorney has come on again, so if you could, please respond to Commissioner Riggs' question. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Harris, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Riggs. I, I think you highlight a good point, which is that we do not have formal advice or a formal reading from HCD on this specific matter, and I think that's by design, because HCD has had many opportunities, particularly in a 30-page memorandum explaining the, the ADU laws to articulate how a city can apply front yard setbacks to subdivision ADUs in light of the plain language of the state ADU laws. And that is a very difficult thing to do, because the state ADU laws very clearly provide that no objective standards or subjective standards may be applied by cities on subdivision E ADUs. Now, this issue has come up- And that is a very difficult thing to do. Because the state ADU laws very clearly provide that no objective standards or subjective standards may be applied by cities on subdivision E ADUs. Now, this issue has come up in other jurisdictions where arguably equal or greater health and safety issues have arisen with subdivision E ADUs. For example, in a number of jurisdictions that are located in very high fire hazard severity zones or adjacent to the WOE, ADUs are still required in those jurisdictions, in those high fire hazard severity zones. Because cities cannot impose standards that would limit the ability of the city to limit ADUs or condition ADUs on meeting any fire safety standards that are not contained in the building code or the fire code. And that is also an opinion that I've obtained from HCD. So what we are advising the commission tonight is what we think is our best guess at how the state laws should be interpreted. Should the state laws be drafted that way? Probably not. Because it doesn't make practical sense that the state reserves to local jurisdictions the ability to impose side and rear yard setbacks, but does not reserve to local jurisdictions the ability to impose front yard setbacks. It doesn't make a ton of sense. But that is how the state ADU laws are drafted. And so our advice is the best advice that we can give, given, as Commissioner Harris said, one, the plain language of the state ADU laws, and two, the informal advice that we've received from HCD.
And through the chair, if I could just clarify a point. The state ADU laws note that we may not apply subjective standards to the ADU. However, objective standards are similarly limited or are not limited?
For ADUs that fall outside of subdivision E, you're absolutely correct that cities may impose those objective standards that are within categories reserved to local jurisdictions, such as setbacks, FAR, coverage, other design-related setbacks. Those objective standards may indeed be applied to non-subdivision E ADUs. But subdivision E ADUs are in a separate category. And the plain language, as I've already said, suggests that no objective standards can be applied to those ADUs, with the exception of the very limited standards that the state imposes, which is four-foot side and rear yard setbacks, 800 square feet or less, and new height limitations.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to the city attorney. What is the barrier? What's the level of effort of going from informal advice to formal advice from HCD?
Yeah, so HCD is not actually required to provide formal advice. What they're required to do is on ADUs, what they're required to do is review, unlike the FPPC where you can like, you have an option to obtain formal versus informal advice. That's not how it works with HCD. HCD could provide written advice in the form of an advisory memo. Or they could not. What they are required to do is to review every single city's in the state ADU ordinance and make findings if that ADU ordinance does not comply with state law. So my advice to the planning commission eventually and the city council eventually, when the ordinance, when the ADU ordinance is set to be rewritten, is to consider whether or not the city wishes to impose a front yard setback standard on subdivision E as well as non-subdivision E ADUs. And include that standard in a revised ADU ordinance. And that is how we will obtain, quote, "formal" HCD advice on the matter.
And if I wanted to... Okay, so through the chair again to the city attorney.
Please.
Do you have a, to the city attorney, do you have a sense? Is that in a work plan? Is that, you're referencing the revision of the ADU. Is that something that is on a radar screen? Is that the hypothetical rewrite? What's, do you have any more color around what that is? Is someone contemplating that?
Yeah, so the timeline for that is actually within the next year because it was one of the policy and programs of the city's housing element to revise the state, to revise the city's ADU ordinance. So yes, that is on the near-term to-do list.
And for constituents who see this particular ruling as being a writ large precedent across all subdivision E, that may, at the writing or the revising of the ADU ordinance, that in fact, that may not be the case. And to paraphrase what you just said, there could be relative to subdivision E, should there be the political will to define what a front setback is and where an ADU could be cited in relation to that, correct?
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
I do want to editorialize, but I understand that based on direction from staff. This is not, given that it's a ministerial approval. I won't editorialize. I will say that for folks that are in the audience who are wishing to have an input on a revision to the ADU ordinance, it would be upcoming and I encourage you to participate in that process. I conclude my comments.
Okay, thank you. Did any other commissioners want to speak at this time before we move on to the next item? Okay. Again, thank you, everyone who came to speak tonight. And thank you to my fellow commissioners and city attorney for clarifying, to the extent possible, what we have in front of us tonight. And at this point, we're going to move on to F2. F2 is 700 to 800 El Camino Real. It's a planned development permit revision to consider and adopt a resolution for a revision to an existing planned development permit to reduce a lot size, reduce the number of required onsite parking spots from 360 to 315 spaces, and modify percentage-based development standards. For example, building coverage and floor area ratio based on the reduced lot size to allow for the further purchase of, the future purchase of a portion of the existing site currently used for parking by the city of Menlo Park for the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing project. The revision to the planned development permit would not result in any increase in gross floor area, building coverage, or any modifications to the existing buildings on the project site. The planning commission is a recommending body to the city council on the requested revision to the planned development permit. The site is located in the ECR Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. Before we take public comment, are there any? Does staff want to make any changes or a presentation?
Good evening, Acting Chair Harris, fellow commissioners and members of the public. Staff does not have an update on the staff report. However, would like to point out a typological error that resulted in the removal of a development regulation in the revised planned development permit that is reflected in the original planned development permit. For the record, I would like to read the Development Standard 4G, which states, "Provide covered, secure bicycle parking for employees and the general public." Also, we have present Assistant Public Works Director Hugh Louch at the meeting for any comments or questions. That concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, would any of the commissioners have any clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move to public comment on this item.
Thank you, Chair Harris. Under public comment, each speaker may address the planning commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but if this is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, please click star nine on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know the beginning of your comment and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. At the moment, I don't have any raised hands and I do not have any comment cards for this item.
Okay, let's wait a moment. Still no hands?
Correct, still no hands.
Okay, let's close public comment on this item and bring it back to the dais for any commissioner comments, questions, or ultimately a motion. Who would like to start? Commissioner Barnes?
I'm sorry, I drifted off just a moment there. We, there was no presentation. The staff report stands as is presented and we're moving. So we're now to dais for
Yes.
potential action.
Yes. But there was a, there was a change and added, a missing piece from the development agreement that she
That I did hear, thank you. I appreciate that. For me, this is very straightforward and I make a motion to approve this per the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Are there any other commissioners who would like to provide comment or a second for Commissioner Barnes's motion? Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Acting Chair Harris. I simply wanted to provide additional commentary that is augmenting the 2019 parking utilization study that was done. This happens to be a location that I find myself in at least once a week over the course of the last several years. And my own personal observation, while perhaps not as statistically relevant, is that they are as underutilized as the data was supported from 2019. There are always dozens and dozens of open parking places. And that's not even counting the spots that are specifically in question for being sold off the very uppermost corner of that property. So for that reason, I also think this is pretty straightforward. And I'm happy to offer a second, but would certainly offer the space for other commissioners to speak at this moment, if there's anything else.
Okay, so that is a second. Yes, okay.
It is.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we're going to take a vote. Okay. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric, can you please pronounce your name for me? Because I keep, I forgot to ask you before they started.
It's okay. It's Eric, like the first name. It just has a couple of extra ages so as to confuse you maximally.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick? Great, we have an alliteration. Or is it a rhyme?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So we have seven approved and none opposed. So the motion passes. Thank you. Now, we are going to move on to item F3, which is 450 to 490 Willow Road. It's to consider and adopt a resolution for a use permit to construct a new accessory building containing two bathrooms and a utility closet in Willow Oaks Park, generally between the parking lot and the tennis courts in the OSC. That's Open Space Conservation Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. Do we have a staff report for this item?
Good evening, Acting Chair Harris, planning commissioners and members of the public. Thank you very much. There is a staff report. But to clarify, we do have one update as of now. We received one public comment, which I've shared with the commission. I believe it was also emailed to the commission. And it's available at the back counter for any members of the public who attend. And it is mainly concerning safety concerns with the proposed project. And with that, I will add, we have, representing the city with a brief presentation, Tanisha Werner from the Public Works Department. And she can begin her presentation if you have no questions for myself. Thank you very much.
Please go ahead, thank you.
Hey. Oh, good, thank you for doing the presentation. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Tanisha Werner. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director for Engineering. And tonight, I'll be giving a really brief introduction to our use permit for the new restroom at Willow Oaks Park. Next slide, please. Thank you. So staff is proposing to incorporate a new restroom into the renovation improvements at Willow Oaks Park. The restroom is located just north of the tennis courts and adjacent to the existing parking lot. Willow Oaks has had a restroom in the park in the past. However, in 1997, it was demolished due to concerns over its maintenance. The old restroom was located just to the east of the proposed facility, which is outlined in the red circle. Staff is proposing to incorporate a new restroom at this location. And the proposal is consistent with the 2019 Parks and Recreation Facility Master Plan and which also identifies adding restrooms to all city parks as a priority. And the new restroom at Willow Oaks is specifically mentioned in the master plan. Next slide, please. So the slide is just a site plan showing the location of the new restroom. You can see that it is adjacent to the parking structure and there will be a drinking fountain just outside of the restroom area. Next slide, please. This is a floor plan of the new restroom. We are proposing to install two restrooms that are all gender and also accessible. There is a utility room in between the two restrooms. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the restroom and some of the programming that's associated with the restroom to address any concerns with maintenance and security include daily cleaning of the facility, daily inspections, and automatic locks on the doors. The doors will automatically lock at 10:00 PM and then they automatically unlock at 7:00 AM. If someone happens to be inside the restroom after 10:00 PM, they're not locked inside, they are able to exit the restroom. The locking mechanism just prohibits them from re-entering the locked restroom. Next slide, please. Thank you. And this is just a photo image of what the restroom could look like, with some images of what the wall color will look like and some of the textures on the roof and the face of the exterior. And with that, I will pass it to Matt and I will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Through the chair, that concludes staff and applicant presentation at this time. So if there are any questions for myself or Tanisha as applicant, we're happy to assist with that before public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So from the commissioners, are there, does anyone have any clarifying questions for staff? Or Ms. Werner at this time? Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you. I have a question for the Public Works Assistant Directors. That, who was? To ask again, you'd explained about the time of day in which the restrooms would be opened and closed automatically. Would there also be like some personnel that would go check on it? Because I think that, you know, like in terms of like, you know, making sure there's not somebody that's using it as habitable space, for example, overnight? That sort of thing?
Yeah, no, great question. So when the restrooms lock automatically? So when the restrooms lock automatically, we do not have a staff person that goes to each site just to make sure no one's using the restroom overnight, but we do have a third-party cleaning crew that cleans the restrooms in the evening every single day. And if there are reports of somebody utilizing the restroom overnight, we would really just rely on the community to share that information with us if our parks team is not able to interact with that individual.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, through the chair, if I could ask a follow-up question to Ms. Werner. Did I understand that it is expected that the community will police the use of these restrooms, not the cleaning staff that is hired by and paid for by the city?
Great clarifying question. No, the expectation is not that the community is the enforcement agency. The expectation is that with the daily cleaning of our third-party vendor, they will be reporting any instances of vandalism or unsavory activity. However, they are not on-site 24 hours, and so if there is a report of unsavory activity that's noticed by the community and not noticed by our staff at the time, we would just encourage the community to report that through the Public Works Department or through the Police Department. Thank you for the clarifying question.
And thank you for the answer.
Any other clarifying? Commissioner Barnes?
Through the chair, to Assistant Public Works Director, is the maintenance of this restroom, dual restroom, different from other like and similar restroom facilities in other parks in the city?
So if this proposal is approved, the maintenance would be the same as other restrooms in our park facilities within Menlo Park, the daily cleaning and monitoring inspections.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eric?
Thank you, Chair Harris. Through the chair, to Assistant Director Werner. I note in the staff report that the original proposals for this restroom were submitted in 2017, so six years ago. I'm a former city staff member, so this question in no way implies any wrongdoing or that we're going too slow, but I am curious, like, did this project take six years? Or why were the initial proposals in 2017, and we're building this now? Any insight would actually be greatly appreciated.
Sure. So the restroom proposal is part of a larger renovation that's occurring over at Willow Oaks Park, and for the design of the renovation, that process with community input, coordination through our city council, and also through a planning commission, does take a little bit of time. Resourcing at the staffing level also takes a little bit of time. As a result of the pandemic, Public Works has experienced a little bit of low staffing levels, and so while we've been doing our very best to push this project forward, we do encounter some slowdowns along the way, but we are in no means slowing down intentionally on the project. It just takes a little bit of time.
Thank you. I appreciate all the hard work as someone who lives near Willow Oaks Park.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, let's take public comment on this item.
Thank you. So once again, under public comment, each speaker may address the Planning Commission for once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, please click *9 on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment, and we will make sure each person has a, an opportunity to speak. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And with that, I do not see any hands raised on Zoom and do not have any comment cards.
Okay, let's wait another minute. Oh, thank, okay, I think, oh, I think there's a hand.
Just one hand, yes. Okay, our speaker will be Kathleen Daly. Kathleen, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, thank you for taking the second to hear my comment. As a small business owner, very close to the Willow Oaks Park, after 15 years, I've never had an issue. We're probably, along with Mardini's, one of the closest bathrooms. People have always been respectful. It's a bathroom at the end of the day. People need it for certain reasons, and I know, it should just be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And at this time, I do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay, let's close public comment at this time and bring it back to the dais for any comments, questions, and ultimately a motion. Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you. I was delighted, this is my first meeting, this, you know, I was being reappointed, and I was delighted to see this because I spent many years attending Little League and soccer games at that park and had to carefully plan my, mind my children's liquid consumption due to the lack of the bathroom at this park, which I never understood. So I would, was anxious to be the first to, to support this, and I appreciate that it's before us tonight. So if it's okay, I'd love to make a motion to at least get the discussion going if there's further discussion. So I would like to move to approve the, adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to construct a new accessory, will, blah, 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 two bathrooms and utility closet at Willow Oaks Park.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Is there some more discussion? Any other questions?
I think a first calls for a second as an order of business.
Sure.
Great. So in response to your first, I will second that. In addition, I'll offer commentary that I also use this park. This is for sure a sorely needed improvement to this park for all the programming that goes on there. It's, safety issues are never, are never lost, I think, on any members of the community, and certainly not on me. We don't, however, from my perspective, live our, our lives and our community in fear. It is okay to have restroom facilities, and it is okay to have them maintained, and it's like and similar, because I respect the public comment that came in from folks that live in the neighborhood, and the maintenance is the same as other facilities throughout the city, and I think that's the standard. And if at some point we need to revisit the standard across the city, well, let's do that. But for this facility, for the needs in this park, it's a long time coming, and it's a welcome addition, and I certainly will be one who will be using it. I go there five times a week, so thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Before we vote, I have a question for staff. So this is going to be a gender-neutral bathroom. My question is, I can't tell from the plans whether or not there will be a urinal. I never thought that was going to be a question I was going to ask from the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Tanisha Werner again with Public Works. So right now, in, in the images that we're showing, there is no urinal in the restroom. However, the restroom manufacturer does have different layout plans, so if that is a feature that is of interest to the commission, the community, then that is certainly something that we can look into incorporating.
Okay, I would be interested in adding a urinal to the plans, and I could expand on why that is, but I'm not sure that I necessarily need to. I'm wondering if the motion or the secondor would be willing to entertain a friendly amendment to the motion that we seriously consider adding urinals to those bathrooms.
I'll go as a secondor. I am profoundly uncomfortable with prescribing to our Public Works people what should go into a restroom. What's best practice? What's, what? Is there a reason why the current, what is currently contemplated is not what has been thought through as being the best option for this? And I'll ask that through the chair to, to our Assistant Public Works Director.
Yeah, I think this is, because we haven't had an abundance of gender-neutral bathrooms in the area, I think-
Can I ask the Assistant Public Works Director?
Yes, I would like, so I would like to ask the Assistant Public Works, Ms. Werner, if she has any knowledge about that.
May I finish my question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, there was a question to the Assistant Public Works Director as to why it is this was come up with, and does this not reflect their idea of what's best practice, the way it's currently contemplated?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to pass that question along to Brian Fletcher. He's with Calendar and Associates, and he's part of our design team for the project.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. You know, we've, we've done a number of these bathrooms, you know, with or without urinals in unisex bathrooms, so you can do it both ways. The one thing I did want to suggest is that the location where we're looking at is very tight and limited. Adding a urinal, which has to go up against the plumbing chase, will expand the size of the restroom and make it a bit more problematic to locate it where it's at. So I hope that answers your question.
Since I asked a question, I'll do a follow-up. When you say a bit more problematic, like problematic, problematic, or it's just a one-half, six of one and a half dozen of another, what? Give me, if this is going to be reconsidered, give me a sense of what we would be reconsidering and why, in terms of going with what your recommendation is.
Sure, if we can maybe bring up the plan view of, of the restroom, that could be helpful. These two restrooms are, basically share a common wall with the plumbing chase, and that's where all the plumbing will, will go to. So the, the connection for the toilet, connection for the sink, the connection for any proposed urinal, it would have to connect to the plumbing chase in this scenario. So what that would do is actually extend the length of that restroom in order to fit that urinal in. And if you go, if you can imagine or go back to the plan view and context, we are close to the tennis courts, and we've got some, we've got some challenging grading going on in that situation, which you can't necessarily see in the plan view itself. So I can't, it can be done, but it's going to be a challenge to fit it in there.
Okay, thank you. That satisfies my question, and I would be, I guess respectfully disinclined to alter from what I've heard, but I'll certainly listen to other commissioners if they feel very strongly about it.
Well, similarly, but I know you had another question that you, you didn't get covered.
No, I was asking, I was asking Commissioner Barnes' question of Ms. Werner.
Oh, I see, you're-
That's what I was doing.
Yeah. I, I mean, my concern isn't the virtue or not virtue of urinals. It's really that this has been a six-year process, and I would really like to see the bathrooms get built in, you know, maybe my first term here on the Planning Commission.
Okay, so I think we-
Through the chair?
Yes.
Having not sat this far away from you before, I was not aware that you could not see when I put my light on, which has been on six or eight minutes, so I thought I would speak up.
Thank you for speaking up. Yes, I indeed, I cannot see your microphone from my vantage point.
And although I would have supported a urinal, I would not want it to go back to redesign, and I'll add a little more background. The subject of having a pair of restrooms at Willow Oaks Park is not six or seven years old, it is 20 to 22 years old. That's how long ago it first came to city council, and at that time, there was some question of funding, and it was always below the line, as we say, with capital improvement projects, and it remained below the line for 20 years. I would very much support getting this done. I think Mr. Eric put it correctly.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Okay, we have a first on the table, and we have a second to approve this motion. So without any further thoughts from any other commissioners, let's go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Okay, and I will also vote in the affirmative, so the motion passes with seven commissioners. Okay, all right, let's move on to the next item. That concludes all of the public hearings, and now we're going to move on to G1, Regular Business, which is the selection of Planning Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair for May 2023 through 3 through April 2024. Ms. Sandmar, do you have any updates on how you would like us to proceed?
No, there's no updates to the staff report.
Okay, could I please have a motion? Somebody would like to nominate for Chair. Commissioner Schindler?
I would like to nominate Acting Chair Harris as Chair, Permanent Chair of the Planning Commission.
Okay, let's not make it permanent, just one year. But I appreciate, thank you.
The next chair.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Commissioner Doe?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Did I miss you, Commissioner Riggs? Sorry, all right.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So you do have to open public comment for this? So, you know, if there is a-
Okay.
All regular business items get public comment, so.
Okay, could we please open public comment for the selection of Planning Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair for May 2023 to April 2024?
Yes, so under public comment, each speaker may address the Planning Commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, please click *9 on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment, and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And with that, I do not see any hands raised, and I do not have any comment cards.
Okay, let's give it a minute. Okay, I don't, I still don't see any hands?
No hands and no comment cards.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. We have a motion on the table from Commissioner Schindler and a second from Commissioner Doe. It's so awkward to point me as Chair. Commissioner Harris, so if we could take a vote, that would be terrific. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
And I guess I will vote as well, so that is seven in favor and zero opposed. Now, I would like to have somebody to nominate a selection of the Vice Chair for the coming year. Who would like to make that motion?
Through the chair, but I have a, I do have a question for staff.
Please, go right ahead.
We have traditionally selected Chair and Vice Chair based on, I believe it's length of service to date without having served in one of those positions. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's how it's traditionally been done.
Would I also be correct that Commissioner Doe and Commissioner Schindler are approximately the same length of service, with Commissioner Doe being a few months longer?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. If the chair, please, I would like to nominate Commissioner Doe.
Thank you. In a second?
Oh, I'll offer an enthusiastic second to that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Okay, let's take a vote. For those who are in favor of appointing Commissioner Doe as Vice Chair for May 2023 through April 2024.
I'm sorry, to reject. Through the chair to staff, does Commissioner Doe need to acknowledge and accept the nomination?
Okay, Commissioner Doe, do you accept the nomination?
It would be nice to know if we're going to vote.
Thank you, and I gratefully accept the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will take a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
And I am also an enthusiastic yes. So again, that's seven approve and zero opposed. And I love that I can say that there are seven for the first time in many months. So I'm going to close item G1, and we're going to move on to H, which is informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have any informational items? And if you could provide us with your thoughts on what might be coming for us, before us in the next meeting on May 15?
Yes, so we have a meeting in two weeks on May 15. We have sign review for Citizen M, and a study session for 795 Willow Road. So just those two items, and we're still determining what will be on the June 5 agenda.
And do you have any other informational items?
I have no other informational items, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, are there any questions or other items that any of the other commissioners would like to bring up before we adjourn? Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Harris. We were recently surveyed via email about possible dates for a joint housing planning meeting, I believe in the May and June timeframes. I was just curious as to when, if we have an estimate, when that date will actually be set.
I know the Housing Element Team is working on coordinating that. So I would say just stay tuned, and we'll let you know as soon as we have more information.
Okay, is it weeks or month till?
I think likely weeks, not months. One, one thing to note is, I believe some commissioners have not yet been able to respond. So if everyone is able to respond to the email, that would be greatly appreciated.
And have our two new commissioners been sent their email regarding that? Okay.
Thank you for that update.
Okay, any other commissioners? Commissioner Barnes?
So first of all, I want to acknowledge that the chair has had a fundamental disadvantage. Usually, in the past, we've had red lights here, right below the mic, so you could see, like, who wanted to chirp and who didn't.
That's called an upgrade.
Right. So I appreciate the fact that you can't see, like, Mr. Riggs over here. I feel bad for him. The second thing I wanted to ask to the staff was whether, so we're in May, and the ADU update ordinance, is it your understanding, Ms. Sandmeyer, that we, can you collaborate, corroborate the city attorneys thinking that there will be an ADU ordinance work done this year, rewrite being done this year? Do you have any sense of that?
Yeah, I think certainly the goal is to work on it. We don't have the specific timeline established yet.
Okay. I'm flabbergasted that a house can be, that an ADU can be built four feet from the street. So I look forward to that rewrite, because I think it's a disservice to subdivision E. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, and also I will let you all know that if you raise your hand, I can see your hand. If you raise your physical hand, I, yes, I can see that through the screen, especially if you wave it around. I can see it in the screen. Yes, exactly, that works. So Commissioner Riggs, I think you had a comment or a question.
Oh, I did, but it was, it can wait. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? If not, I am going to adjourn this meeting at 8:41 PM. Thank you all.